So give us five, 10 minutes to get through some of the early stuff.
No, we're all, we're, we're, we're.
Right on.
We're just hanging out.
All right, so I'd like to call to order the Shelburne Planning Commission for April 27th, 2017. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have a motion to approve.
A motion to approve the agenda.
So we have a first by Don and a second by Dick. So approval of the agenda is there.
Did you want to consider amendment to reorganize?
Oh, we have to formally do that, don't we? Yeah.
Do you want to approve the agenda with the amendment to move?
To move item eight.
I think there was a, I think there was a motion to amend the agenda.
And a motion to amend the agenda to move number eight to number one.
I think Dick did that.
Yes. And we'll move the second bullet item and number eight to the next item, which will become...
Correct, so eight becomes...
Item three.
Item three.
It's a little bit tricky because the motion has all three of them together.
Right.
And it's got, so it's two motions, one for the hearing, one for the report in that motion, so you'll, you could just read each of those motions and just do them again later. Or you could do them all now.
All right, let's, how about we just do them?
Do item eight.
Yeah, we'll do item eight now, because the, the only, the only risk is if anybody shows up for daycare, but I don't think that they would, or for integrated agriculture and...
And what you're doing is setting the date so they could come at the hearing.
Exactly.
I wanted to make a comment or a question on this, like...
So, yeah.
I'm still on a motion here, so can we, okay, so I've got a motion to amend the agenda to advance item eight.
To item three.
To item three.
Okay, okay, so you want to finish that motion and vote it?
So we have that motion?
All in favor.
All, all in favor. All right. So we're going to move number eight to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
You got it.
So my question is, on this item, we're proposing to make a zoning change for the district for this one item, and I wondered if it wouldn't be simpler to create a reg that says that non-conforming use that has been idle for 18 months may be reestablished by the DRB as a conditional use. So that would be fairly simple. I don't know if it's effective.
I guess, if I can jump in.
Rather than change the zoning.
Yeah, um, there are, there's a lot going on with that as an alternative to what they've asked for. What they've asked for is a restoration of what they could do before, and what they could do before was to have a retail use in that district. The thing that you're talking about has a lot broader implications, and there's nothing in the material that I prepared that addresses that.
Hmm.
And, yeah, you, you raise all kinds of other issues that haven't begun to be explored in a proposal to essentially undercut the concept of non-conformities.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't, it's just, I'm not sure, you couldn't, you couldn't instruct me, unless you've got it mapped out, what to warn. Do you have that wording?
I don't exactly. I just managed to get to this this afternoon, so I sort of created, but you're the magician when it comes to creating language.
Yeah, it wouldn't have my support, and especially on such an order, such short notice. I mean, the, the consensus I thought that existed was to address this simply at the use, and that's what the proposal was.
And we don't have a way of, there isn't a way of short-circuiting the process that needs to take place in terms of warning the meeting and then having the, having the discussion, and that was outlined at the last meeting.
Right, I mean, the more time you spend before you give me the text, or we have the text that I then can warn, the longer it's going to be for them. The thing about the way it is right now is that we would have a date certain when the hearing is held.
Right.
It would be two weeks later at the earliest.
Did I just forget the discussion?
Yeah, so unfortunately, just from a procedural standpoint, the, if, if we were to change what we had laid out in the last meeting, then all that's going to do is extend the timeframe to be able to get anything into place.
But the only thing, the question we had when we left the other day was, when, when we left it, it seemed like what you were laying out was a little bit more than what was needed. I sort of agree with, I guess, it's Dick here, the way he stated it, because I know it's a slippery slope, or it's a really fine line, and Dean wants to cover all his bases, but, again, if, if we didn't have them move in there, or if it was not a non-conforming use now, we meet every other criteria. It was less than a year, I mean, so everything else would, I think the way Dick just said it was sort of what we were hoping for, it seems like that's not the way it's going to be written for this idea.
Are you getting limited to that, to one district? I mean, this, this is the thing, there's the perspective, you know, I know where you're coming from, Tom, but the mechanism for giving you what you want is to have the use be allowed, because it'll still be a non-conformant. It'll, it could lose some rights under statute, there's, you know, there are potentially some, some issues that we want to make sure that we don't give you only half of what you want, because stat, certain statutory protections extend to non-conformities. So if it's not allowed, if it's not a permitted use or a conditional use, and it's not a pre-existing non-conformity, it may be in this really strange place where it doesn't have certain rights. So if you want, you want to serve your client, or your pal, he wants to serve his client, get the zoning amended, so that it allows them to apply.
It'll be quicker to continue with what we had started with.
No, what, what's, now I'm going to say, yeah, because we just found out on, what, today's Thursday, Tuesday, there's no money coming in on, on Monday of next week, there's no money now.
Well, we heard, the, the commission heard this issue two weeks ago, which is why we're still quickly...
No, but there was still, there was still a rental coming in.
Yeah.
Now, now it's not, they're moving out, because they don't know, we can't give them a long-term lease, because we don't know what we can do with the problem, and then we're going to be responsible to, to withhold the lease that we signed with them. They want a one-year lease, and we can't give them that, because we can't guarantee that we're going to own it in one year. Therefore, in the courts, in the courts, and I'm a landlord, I know this, in the courts, we're, if we sign a one-year lease, then we can't withhold it. We're responsible to pay for them to, for their housing for the rest of the, say, eight months, that we don't own the building, or if the building's gone, and we can't get into that either, because then it's lawyers, and it's, and we just found out on Tuesday afternoon, I think it was, that they're, they're gone. And it's like, huh, now we're just, now we're really, I'm, I'm not crying to cry, I mean, it's just, I'm just stating a fact.
No, I, I fully appreciate the situation.
And I appreciate your understanding of that.
But in order to, I mean, this is the speed of process.
No, I, I, we understand that, that's why we came, but I just wanted that to be known to the people that, that we just got thrown a wrench.
With the tools that we have, the fastest that we can move is down the path that we had outlined last week, which is...
And that's, and that's what, fine, but we're just scared now, because I don't know how to come up with the mortgage on Monday, honestly.
One thing that has to be made clear, Tom, is that your proposal wouldn't happen any faster than the one that they're doing.
I, I...
And in fact, it's going to slow it down.
And I agree with that.
So if you want it to happen fast, let it happen.
Okay.
And then make it be an allowed use that they can apply for. It'll still require a trip to the DRB. This, this adjustment to have the DRB say that something can be a non-conformity and rest, can restored, it'll still mean a trip to the DRB.
No, I, I agree with you, we're just scared now, but this is, we got a, we got, Tuesday was a tough day. Financially, I don't, you know, I'm not talking about, financially, it's tough, and we just found this out Tuesday, and I, thank you.
No, and I get that, but I, I'm not sure that we have any tools available to do anything.
The statute dictates the process.
Quicker, right.
I wanted you guys to know that, that wasn't what happened.
No, I appreciate you sharing, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
What do we need to do to move on?
I, I think we just, I think we need to make the motion as listed, so that we can continue the process to warn the meeting, or to have the language put together to warn the meeting to...
Yeah, the language, the language is together, so if you adopt the motions, then it allows me to make the statutorily required distribution to the surrounding towns, to the regional planning commission, to the state, it allows me to warn it in the paper, and then it allows you to hold the hearing on that date, so that you could then close the hearing and send it on to the select board.
Right.
And without, without the motion happening tonight, everything waits.
What is, what is the time frame on that, if the motion goes past tonight, for those other steps to happen?
I know we walked through it last time, but it was going to be a, it passes through us and then goes, eventually goes to the select board.
Yes, so the, the date of the hearing that's specified in the motion, so the soonest that this could, could happen is May 25th. So on May 25th, there would be a hearing that opens, you hope closes, and then results in a decision by the board to send it to the select board. So May 25th, the planning commission's work is potentially done, and then you would hope that at the first meeting in June, the select board receives it, and that, and that'll be around the 10th or something, and that they warn their public hearing, so that would mean probably their first meeting in July, because it takes at least 15 days. So at their first meeting in July, they could adopt it, and then the changes go into effect 21 days later. I mean, there's no short-circuiting this.
No, that's, that's all, I appreciate what you're saying.
We're just trying to understand the process.
Yeah, and we, we talked about it last time, any questions about it? Happy to answer them offline and give you all the materials again.
So are we doing this one at a time, considering all of the proposed amendments at once, or are we, can we do this singly?
I want to unbundle them.
Do you want to unbundle it?
Okay.
Okay.
Well, there, two were bundled together, one was, were they all three in one, the way that the wording is?
I think, on the sheet of paper, they are, so...
No, why?
Which one did you want to discuss separately?
Integrated agriculture.
Yeah, which is unfortunate that Ann wasn't here for a lot of that discussion in the last couple of meetings.
Again, all right, so first, I think, before we can even do this, if you wanted to uncouple them, then...
Can we have a discussion without uncoupling them?
Yeah.
And then...
Yeah.
To understand what...
Yeah, I'm just afraid somebody's going to propose a motion that we, we take all three of these items, the other two haven't even been named yet, and that we vote on warning it.
The others had, those had been discussed, the, the childcare, we had a...
Yeah. You're saying there's no, can't be any discussion tonight? It's on the agenda?
It is on the agenda. The, the language was discussed last time in order to prepare this, in order to make the motion to warn the public hearing this time?
And I apologize that I couldn't be here, but I have something, I mean, I, there is something I would like to say, if, if we get to that topic, it's not your topic.
When we were talking through this last time, the, because there were, around integrated agriculture, there were still a couple of...
I had issues too.
...discussion points around that, but...
But I was going to allow my issues to, when we had the hearing?
Exactly.
I was going to bring up my issues at that point.
And I think that was even discussed, it was framed in that way, that once we get past this, that sets the ball in motion, there's a public hearing, there's going to be more discussion around it, and there are opportunities to change things, this isn't set in stone.
And there are, there is an opportunity to change the proposal following the hearing, you don't have to hold another hearing, so you could have your hearing on the 25th, make some adjustments, and then vote to send the adjusted version to the select board.
I'm in a very awkward position, because I know already I won't be here on the 25th.
So do we, so procedurally, then, can we, what are our options?
You can, you can certainly deal with each one individually, it was just packaged this way, because it seemed like it was...
Or just open this, this item for discussion.
Well, if we do change it, then we...
No, just open it for discussion.
So, just being discussed, I think.
It is, yeah, we, we are discussing, I mean, the next step would be to make the actual motion and read through these, so if there's any comments ahead of time, do I need to make a motion to ask for comments, or...
I would think that I could...
If we're going to separate this, can we get this one passed, then? Your discussion is not on this issue, right? So maybe we can get one of them off the table.
The issue is that the zoning report covers all three, and the motion is to approve the zoning report?
Right, but I think...
Yeah, so that, I, I think that you wouldn't have a problem if you look at the second page of that memo, potential motions, as, as really being, having multiple versions. So someone could move, you know, read the first sentence, and then do the first bullet, and then skip the next two, and you could deal with that motion, then you could deal with the report. I don't think that you're going to have a problem with the report. Well, ideally, you could do all, save the, save the motion on the report until you've done one, two, or three motions on what things to change, and then take up the motion on the report.
And the amended?
And then, right, amended as necessary.
So, so are we doing just the local market with delicatessen, is that the only one?
That's one thing that would take one pressure off.
I, we'll go ahead and do that, then?
Well, we can do the daycare center, too.
Yeah, the daycare is fine.
Oh, the daycare is fine, okay. All right, is there, is the discussion concluded? Shall I make a motion?
You could, you, yeah, you maybe start it with the language that's in the second...
I move to direct staff to warn a public hearing to be held on May 25th, 2017, regarding amendment of the zoning bylaw to address the following: removal of size restriction on daycare centers located in the mixed-use zoning district, definition of a new use to be known as local market with delicatessen, and allowance of local market with delicatessen as conditional use in the Shelburne Falls zoning district, as reflected in documents previously distributed and discussed and approved for hearing.
All right, so a motion by Kate, second by Dick? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion. For the top two, you want to discuss?
Oh, oh, sorry.
So we just made a motion about the daycare and the delicatessen?
Okay, all right.
Okay. So if there is no...
Just no discussion.
No discussion? So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that motion passes, and that directive is there then, and now we open up discussion on the third?
We can deal, yeah, yeah.
We can, so...
If Kate wants to.
So do I do the motion for the report for just those two things?
No, I would say make them, do what you did before, but instead of doing bullets one and two, do bullet three, and that will set the stage for the comments that Ann is hoping to make, or, yeah.
Okay, so I just read what's here, and that's it?
But move to direct.
Same thing.
I, I move to direct staff to warn, wait a minute, what am I reading? The, I'm reading the bottom one?
This part, but then the third bullet, so that it's a separate motion?
Got it, okay, all right. I move to direct staff to warn a public hearing to be held on May 25th, 2017, regarding amendment of the zoning bylaw to address the following: modification of provisions relating to integrated agriculture, including clarifying the definition of land development and clarifying the relationship between primary integrated agricultural activities and secondary integrated agricultural activities, as reflected in documents previously distributed and discussed and approved for hearing.
And now a discussion?
And, okay, so motion by Kate, second by Dick, and now open to discussion?
Discussion, yes, I would like to say. A general comment is, when I read this, it's, it strikes me, the same way it struck me the first time I ever read it, that this is a really tortured ordinance, it still is. I thought we agreed that to have an incentive for business development, that we, and, and to make anyone who's dealing with integrated agriculture as a business, I thought we agreed that we were not going to ask to look at their revenues. All that I see here is that we changed the words, two-thirds, to two numerals, 66 percent, that doesn't do anything. One-third is 34 percent. I thought that we were not going to even ask the businessperson to show their revenues and how they break out. I can't think of another business where we, where we ask that, so I think that this whole revenue criteria doesn't belong, and now my second point is going to be, I don't think we need secondary integrated agricultural activities as a definition, I think all we need is primary. If you go into Article 21, which is definitions, you will find this: the storage and sale of crops or produce not principally produced on the farm, or the resulting products from such crops or produce. In other words, the sale of non-farm products. How is that any different than this, called secondary integrated agricultural activities? Sales of non-farm products related to those grown on the farm. So I say that's the same thing, in just different words, we don't need to clarify a primary and a secondary. Then the second thing that makes a point here is that in, under secondary integrated agricultural activities, we say, hosting of educational and cultural events incidental to farming on the farm's activities. How is this any different than the primary thing, called tours of growing areas and storage and processing facilities? A tour, when you offer a tour of your business, it's educational, the people that are touring it learn something by doing that, and you might almost say it's cultural if you want to, because it might be something that gives you pride in the town of Shelburne, that we have such a business. So in terms of economic development in this town, which we, we talk about, we say, form-based zoning for the Route 7 corridor north is one of the real reasons for even going through the labor of having this code, is for economic development of this dead and dying strip. But we also want economic development, we want business to, to start and grow and thrive in this town, and this is a disincentive, to have all this language that has the same thing, and then to ask the person to come and get a permit, and bring their revenues, to average their revenues, to show, I sold this many jars of jam, and I showed, and I sold this many, I don't know what, pick-it-yourself blueberry tours.
But that's not what it calls for.
Well, I, but, that we, we're trying to introduce secondary integrated agricultural activities, and so this was something new and different, and then we're asking for revenue criteria.
So your initial issue with the revenue criteria assumes that there's going to be a mandate for information, that the bylaw isn't calling for. The, the bylaw is calling for the person who's running the business to provide two numbers, what's the percentage of primary, with the revenue from primary, and what's the percentage of the revenue from secondary? That's, that's not getting into their books, that's not saying how much, that's simply saying, give us two numbers that illustrate the balance between the things that are inherently agricultural and the things that are not.
Okay, if it were my business, I'd make sure that one came no higher than 66, and the other came no higher than 34. I, you know, it's, unless you've got numbers to back it up, what's the point of talking about 66 percent and 34 percent? I just...
Because it's about the balance, it's about the relationship between the things that are relate, that are closely related to the agricultural activity, and the thing that we have to remind ourselves of, Ann, is that this is a use that was carved out of the regs, or created in the regs, so that people could add value to agricultural activities that were taking place. It wasn't to create an opportunity for someone to do something that wasn't related to agriculture, but recognize that there would be things that people might want to sell, that are incidental, that happen as a result. So the example that we give is that if you are pressing, growing grapes and pricing grapes and making wine, even though you don't blow your own glass, you might want to sell wine glasses, that, that was, on the other hand, it wasn't an excuse, or an allowance, or a loophole in the regulations to allow someone to set up a shop that made its primary revenue from selling wine glasses and trinkets. So it says you can do some of those things, but they have to be in balance, they are not taking over the activity, and that's where the numbers come in. This, this was created as a result of a pretty long community discussion.
I appreciate that, I sound like I'm trying to stop progress here, but, but nowhere in our definitions do we call something integrated agriculture secondary, nowhere do we say secondary integrated agriculture.
Ann, this, I was in that last meeting, but the meeting before, I think it was, when some folks came to present this issue, and my assumption, my thought was that this addressed their issue, in the sense that if they had a bad season, it was, you know, there, you could, you could get outside of that, that ratio in a given year.
That was the adjustment that was made, and the language was less, we need to see your books, it's more that the numbers just need to be certified, and it needs to be...
And it was a self-certification, it was not, right? It's not like you got to present a set of balance sheet and income statement, et cetera. It's a pretty simple pro, it seems to me, from a financial point of view.
Take a second. Gentlemen, we're, we're pretty much done with your issue.
That's true.
So you...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Wow. You were enjoying this.
Okay, you're welcome to stay.
I know it's riveting.
But if I'm joining the board myself, it's hardly...
You live in Shelburne.
That's right. It's a rural area, this particular area.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Good luck, guys. Is, did, this language kind of came about last, last week, the last meeting, but it seems to me that this addressed the issue that was brought to us.
The inclusion of the three out of five, that, that language was meant to soften what it was. I, I'll fully admit that I, I struggle a bit between the primary and the secondary concept, which may be perhaps similar to you. The way that we ended it, and how we ended up with this language that was heading toward this motion, was that this isn't necessarily, this isn't the end, we're not saying this is absolutely what it's going to be, this is warning what it is, there's going to be public comment, there is opportunity.
I, yes, you know, I'm going to be reasonable, I understand there will be a hearing, and if somebody else other than I wants to object to this secondary business, when it's already a hybrid, a hybrid of what? A hybrid of something agricultural and something else that has to do with sales or something. I mean, we've all, we're already saying it's a hybrid. I, I just don't see why there's any reason to clarify between primary and secondary, because your hybrid is already a primary and a secondary.
No, that's not correct. The hybrid is the fact that it's got agricultural core, which is exempt from municipal land use regulations, and then the things that are beyond that exempt set of activities. So that's what the hybrid is. The hybrid isn't primary and secondary, the hybrid is the fact that it's related to certain things that are exempt from local zoning ordinarily, and anything that someone wants to do and they qualify for the exemption, it's completely out of the zoning's control. But there are often people that want to do things that are a combination of both, and that was the situation that the Alberts found themselves in, and that's what led the planning commission several years ago to create this allowance, and it was going, it was going beyond that and recognizing that there's this incidental sales aspect of it, which is not really agricultural at all, selling wine glasses isn't agricultural.
Well, we're going to hope that people who are entrepreneurs and innovative will all be doing something like that, to make their business grow.
Yeah, the issue is that this is, this is, this was created for the rural district, where the goals of the town plan are to keep the rural area rural, and to the extent that you want to create lots of opportunities for economic enterprises of all sorts, it won't be remaining rural.
That's my issue, is that, this is, I kind of sat through when we did the initial one, and it was to allow agriculture uses the ability to do something besides a farm stand. It wasn't, I don't think the goal was to make integrated agriculture a focused business, and that's what this does, and that's why I, I don't like it at all. I personally don't like what we've done at all, so that's, but I'm waiting for the hearing.
Well, anyway, it is all, this, having a hybrid kind of agriculture, in other words, a, a primary agricultural use, and then all the secondaries that feed off of it, it is still better than building mini mansions on long driveways in the rural district.
Hey, how about for a suggestion? Because this will go to a hearing, and it can be further discussed by us as well, like everybody, with additional input. I think from the previous hearings that we had, this is the result that we came up with to address based on how our bylaws read today, how can we soften them to handle some of the objections, which, to some degree, I think this does, but it is a complicated subject, so I think that the, the hearing, we could get in... that the, the hearing, we could get into, if, if there's an alternative way to address this that satisfies the need, then we could explore that.
The hearing is the alternative way.
It is.
It is.
Well, it's that, or we, we wait and keep this, and make this an agenda item for the future, to make sure that we're all in agreement before we warn the hearing that then has the further discussion, which could go the other way.
No, I'm not trying to be a break on, on progress here. But I didn't want to be silent either.
Fully appreciate that.
Because I know I won't be at the next meeting, so. Thank you. Thank you for the time, everybody.
So with that, the, the motion has been made, so it's the motion to approve is the next step?
Well, you gotta, if you are, no more discussion, you're gonna wanna vote on that motion.
So...
We have a motion, right?
We have the motion, so then it's...
And seconded.
And seconded, so...
No more discussion.
So then it's all in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Two nays.
Well, one way, one way.
Uh, one nay.
Oh, I'm, well, maybe...
I'm going to abstain, because I find merits in what you're saying, and I don't, I read the packet, but the backstory of, and as best I can understand this, this is farmers who are in rural areas, who do something in addition to quote-unquote farming or agriculture, whether that be glass, or selling chocolate, or maybe they're making croissants or other food, and they're generating revenue otherwise. I agree that doing a 66, 34% split is kind of arbitrary, especially what is the enforcement mechanism for doing this? And further, I would argue, we shouldn't be making things more difficult on a farming family in a rural area trying to enhance revenue. It's not changing the nature of the farm, it's not changing the structure of the surrounding area.
How do you know that?
Huh?
How do you know that?
Well, that would be part of the discussion, in terms of, instead of doing a purely numerical, it's, have you retained the original structure of the farm versus putting out 100 picnic tables?
So this, right, so this is how we get into the definition, this is the problem, right? How do you define that? How do you measure that? Blah, 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 right? Yeah, so you're right, but what's the mechanism?
So there was a, a nay, an abstention, and four...
And four ayes.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
So that closes that?
Yes.
Okay.
So then you could have your motion on the report.
Okay. And will it just be one report for all three of them?
Yes, it would.
Okay. I move to approve the zoning change report prepared by staff and dated April 27, 2017, and direct staff to distribute said report and copies of the amendment proposal as required by statute.
Second.
Oh, okay. So a motion by Kate, second by Dick, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
So four in favor, two abstentions? So that was Agenda Item Eight, which became Three. So now, if we go back to the original Agenda Item Three of approval of the minutes?
Which there were paper copies, which you had not had in your, your printed packets, but were in the digital packet.
So for those who did review, do we have any comments? Or should we, I, I did read through these, I had one minor adjustment that I, I mentioned to Anne, just adding a D to a word. If it hasn't been fully reviewed by enough people, should we hold off on the approval of these until next time?
Certainly can.
I read through, I didn't see anything.
You did? Okay.
We have four.
And I read it, but I'm still going to abstain, because I wasn't at the meeting.
I, I'm fine with it, I read it.
Okay. So we would have four. So a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting from April, like, 13?
So moved.
Moved by Dick.
Second.
Sorry, second by Don. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So four ayes, two abstentions. So that's... So then Agenda Item Four, any, does anybody have any disclosures pertaining to any potential conflicts of interest? Or anything on the agenda? Seeing none. Moving on to the next one, Commissioner questions and comments? Are there any questions or comments?
Welcome, Perry.
Yes, certainly, welcome, yeah. Good to have you on. Bit of a rocky start to this one, but Jamie will be back next week, or next time. Okay, next one is open to the public, seeing none. We'll move on to the comprehensive plan update. Which is, now, we did, I know there were, the idea is to consolidate down our, our visioning, and the goal of this next chunk of time is to discuss any big ideas that we've had in terms of vision-related ideas that are gonna help guide the town plan creation. From a facilitation standpoint, is this where, Dean, we wanna do a board and...
Use paper and pens, or use the computer to project the list, whichever approach people would prefer.
So there's a couple of things here. The general, the general idea that I had, reading through this and, and thinking through what it is we're trying to achieve here, is to one, brainstorm the key ideas that we're looking at having to guide the plan. So from a visioning perspective, what are those big ideas? And then, once we have those, and those could be terms, phrases, whatever it is, we'll write it on the board, once we have those, I'd like to work towards gaining consensus on what the most important ones are that we want to pursue. And then, once we have that, the next step would be determining what we would like our vision to look like, in terms of format. Is it a, is it a phrase, a sentence, a paragraph, a page? How detailed do we want to be? But the first step toward any of this is to get the ideas down and figure out what the keywords are that we want. And Dean, feel free to correct me if this is not what...
That's what I had understood you to be planning to do. And, like I said, I, I have cards, people want to write things down, and however structured you want it to be, and if you'd rather have things written here or typed. You were saying something about maybe using the computer, because if we've got a list and then prioritize, you were talking about some kind of ranking or something like that?
Yeah, when I, generally, at least from a personal perspective, when I go through brainstorming types of things, I generally throw it all in a spreadsheet, and then rearrange, prioritize, wait, that kind of thing. So the, the main objective is to get the ideas on paper, so we can see them. I can start, I, they, just to, to get the ball rolling. When I was thinking about visioning and the key things that we wanted in that statement, based on discussions that we've had, I think that things like vibrant, socially responsible, productive, an engaged community, and safe.
So one question, is it, are you, are you a, you looking for people to give phrases or individual words for concepts?
Mostly words, that then we can distill down into how we want to represent that. And I just sort of mentioned those things, that the, the goal here, I think, is just to get down the words, and then we figure out how we want to prioritize, and what we would, what we want to rally around.
So I apologize, so now that I'm...
Sure, socially responsible? Probably way too generic. And community engagement? Add safe as well, but I, I think at this point, this is pretty open, just to throw things out.
I'm not as concerned with the format. I'm gonna leave that up to the rest of the commission to decide, but I, my goal would be to simplify, clarify what we have. So wherever, however it migrates to the new plan, that we keep that in mind, as making it a readable document that people can understand.
So that's process. It is.
So do you want to talk about both the, the document and the vision for the document?
Well, I, personally, I think it would be wise to get consensus on what our driving factors are behind the plan, because that is gonna help us, as we get into the details of the plan, to keep conversations on task and focused, where if we start getting into digressions or discussions that may be on the fringe, we can relate back to what our vision is, and say, well, does this apply to our vision? Is it applicable? Do we pursue this topic? Or do we table that?
I'll throw one out. People, the people take pride in the appearance of their town, and in its 250-year-old history.
I'll go. I have been thinking not so much about the, well, the, the existing conditions, so much as what, what tomorrow could look like, thinking of this as a plan, so. And one of the things that I would like to see in this is, is that this is a process where we plan for outcomes, so, which, which I would define as meaning not just how things will look, or might look, but also how they will actually work and function. So it, there would be a really strong implementation side of this. And I would like, the vision I have is a town that is economically relevant, a community where young people want to settle and invest, and I would like to see us increase our investment in multimodal transportation, and more options than single-family homes. And to, and settlement patterns matter. Let's, I'll just put that out there, if we're, not to get too into the weeds too quickly.
I'd like to put, to put a greater emphasis on the economic development of the Shelburne To be proactive.
And as part of this process, I'm not necessarily trying to force anything in particular, it's just more to, these are great, great ideas, I mean, phrases, concepts, how we want it to be. The way I was viewing this is, what, what are the things that pop into my head that represent the town that I would want to live in? And knowing where we are, what our history is, keeping all that in context, but what would we like? Because this is our opportunity to set that tone. Fifteen things is better than zero? So do, do we have any thoughts around, I mean, any other ideas or words, or...
I think I'm dated, because I've been through the plan now three times, and we've done, you know, we've put out questionnaires, and I kinda feel like this plan that we have kinda represents what people are looking for in the town. So this is really just a refinement in my mind, so it's...
I have to say, I find this process a bit awkward, right? We're sitting here forcing ourselves to kinda come up with, with things. It seems, seems like we're, we're, and maybe Dick's right, we're, we're trying to create something new, and something is there already, and are we talking about throwing out what we have?
Nope.
Or just refining it and making it more relevant?
Yeah, to me, this is part of the refining process, that, as we've discussed before, I think there's, there's clearly content in the current plan that we're gonna be using. This isn't throwing everything out and starting from scratch, but...
It is retooling.
Yeah, recognizing that we're, there is a lot of great content, but what is the, how do we want to, the vision to reflect, or how do we want the town plan to be reflected in the vision? Like, if, if we come up and decide that whatever key concepts that we've, we've weighted and we've deemed, okay, this is what is going to influence any discussions that we have around any components of the town plan, this is that foundation. Not to say that it's gonna throw stuff out, but as, as we're going through the plan and prioritizing, well, some things may stay, we, we've already talked about how we want to simplify it, and you echoed that again here. Having some guidance through what our key ideas are could help us with that simplification.
Maybe if we threw up the current vision, we could dissect that a little bit.
I could pull it up, although I...
I don't think that's valuable, it talks about 2050. We're writing a plan that will have to be rewritten or amended in eight years, so...
Yeah, next week.
So...
There's a difference between the time horizon for the plan and when it needs to be renewed, which is why the vision says for 2050, because if you only plan until the five years are done...
Well, none of us are gonna be here, maybe in 2050, otherwise. In 2050, so it's...
If we are all here.
But it's an important distinction for people to understand, and it needs to be explained, and I'll, I'll explain it, that is that when you're doing community planning, you're not just looking for what's gonna be there in five years, because a lot of the things that communities are trying to get, you know, it takes us 20 years to get a bridge built. That's one thing.
And that's where, like, some of these concepts that are being up there, being put up there, the, the multimodal discussion, being economically relevant, like, a lot of these things, you could say, well, yeah, that, that is what we're talking about in all of our bylaw discussions and everything else, but having things like that explicitly stated in a vision statement, when I first joined the board, and we were getting into minutia of specific bylaws, my view was, some of this seems really, really nitpicky, because isn't there, like, you can tell what the spirit of that bylaw is. I get that there are people that could look at it from a legal, technical perspective and go in another direction, but what was it that was influencing our discussions? And then when I went and I read through the town plan, and got into some of the detail and realized, well, the vision statement, the goals, the objectives, that it's all laid out and right there. That, that is what sets the tone. And my thought was that we were kinda forgetting that a little bit, and going through this process, I think, is gonna reestablish it, but with the tone that we want to ensure is in there. If that ends up being exactly what we have today, then that is, but from previous Planning Commission meetings, I don't think that that was the case.
Want me to throw out another statement?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Or done with it?
No.
That growth in population and density will, could, will take place in the designated growth areas one and two.
And I would say that we will pursue dense, extra density, clustering, and natural resource protection within those areas, to support multimodal patterns of development, where people are able to walk or bike to many daily needs.
A shorter way, maybe, Kate, of saying that is strive for connecting neighborhoods and reducing the use of motorized vehicles.
Yeah, but I, it, part of it is, I want to get to the idea, we're creating a qual, a high-quality... a high-quality-built environment where people are going, there's going to be, I don't know, joy and delight associated with being able to get around, not in our cars. It's not just, you know, like what we have on Route 7, you know? I mean, that, to me, that's not a great achievement, where you have a bike lane, you know, next to 18-wheelers roaring by. So there's, there's a kind of intentionality about how this all comes together. Leverage our assets, scenery, tourism, you know, the other, the social qualities that are very, make this a very appealing community.
Here's another one. That Shelburne's people protect and enjoy Shelburne's natural environment.
This may be helpful inasmuch as the town is comprised of the people in the surrounding areas. And when my wife and I were moving to Vermont, we had a lot of options, and we chose Shelburne. And the reasons we chose Shelburne, which is, I think, part of this whole vision, is because there's good public schools, the roads are nice, it's naturally beautiful, there's cultural activities to do, whether that be the museum, or the limited restaurants, or that quaint town feel. But when I think of a vision, it's got to be something that's attractive to the people that are here, but also motivates people to want to come here, whether it be tourism or to live here. And one of the best things that Shelburne has going for it is, it is close enough to Burlington to give you the city feel, but far enough away so that you can feel like you're in the countryside. And we've lived in a lot of states, and it is really hard to find that. And I think that is really kind of unique. You know, you can change a lot of things, but you can't change location. And we are a 15-minute drive to downtown Burlington, which is a cluster of business development, all of those things. So like, the vision, I have to boil it down as simply as possible, is living in a naturally beautiful place where people take pride in the community, and there's good public services, which is just so far from a given almost everywhere else, where people don't want to send their kids to public schools. Whereas here, everybody's like, I wouldn't send my kids to private school, which was like, a thing that, that we thought was really appealing. So, I mean, my two senses, and I started reading through the big plan document, volume two, going back to, you know, thousands and thousands of years ago, Shelburne's population was 1,000 people in 1900. It's a little over 7,000 now. We've added on average 50 people every year in 117 years. That's a super, super, super small growth. Houston has 5,000 people show up every day. We have 50 a year.
That, that represents Vermont in general.
Yes. And as this points out, the unemployment rate in Vermont, in northern New England, is super low. And so businesses can't find workers, so wages are going up. It's causing inflationary pressures, and it makes it harder for people to live here. And so the vision, I hope, and you talk about economic development, and it is one of the reasons I joined, was because I want to help make this town economically vibrant while maintaining that rural feel and all of those things. So I hope our vision statement and purpose combines all of these elements of creating bikeways and walkways, so that you're not having exhaust, you know, fumes down your throat every time you're trying to walk, but also something that brings people here. So I don't have, like, specific one-word terms, but I think everybody can agree, you want a vibrant community with great things going on, whether that be the fire department, the police department, the roads not having giant puddles in them.
Yeah, that's incredibly valid. And the, the idea was less of words. I did throw out words, but it's the, the idea concept, like, the concepts behind what is it that we like? And really, this is one of those open-ended brainstorming things that gets ideas out on the table that we can reduce into a vision statement. And then the next activity would be, what does that vision statement look like? But based on the material in here, and, and considering how to prepare a vision, the, the key takeaway, and just brainstorming in general, is to get the ideas out there, distill them down, see what the, the key items are, and then, then work on drafting something after that. So the main exercise, from my perspective today, was to get these concepts down and see where, how we wanted to weight them.
We have one other interesting dilemma in traffic on Falls Road, and it's being dealt with a small group now. They're trying to do things to slow and, and possibly discourage traffic. I don't think it's going to work. I don't think discouraging the traffic is going to work, because they can't go over at 7. Unfortunately, I think it's a necessity that they use the arteries of, unfortunately, Falls Road. The only thing we might be doing is squeezing them up to Spear Street at some point in So I think, I don't know how we can focus on that, but I think it is an issue that, I don't know if it's an issue for planning.
Well, to paraphrase Perry, how about leverage our prox, our, our location, the advantages of our location, proximity to Burlington?
The other thing is affordability, is that you hear about how unaffordable it is to live in Vermont. But most of my clients now are coming from the Cape, Seattle, and they think this is really a very affordable place to live.
Depends on where you come from.
Right. And unfortunately, what's happening is, there are a lot of these people coming in, and they're not bringing houses to sell, which is putting a crunch on our market.
Yeah.
I think that's.
Sounds, seems like you're on the precipice.
Oh, well, just, you know, the housing is, is huge, is a huge issue. And I think we need to have many more different kinds of housing options. You have a lot of people who are, you know, empty nesters, who there's, they would like to stay in Shelburne, and there's, there's no alternative for them to, to really, you know, move out of their house that they've, is now too big for them. And, you know, that's, I think that's, sounds like there's demand for, from young families who would like to purchase these houses if they were available to purchase.
Maybe if they weren't so big. So maybe a move at some point to double up some of these houses.
Right. Well, that's the other thing. I mean, how can we adapt? You know, the, the demographics are changing. How can we adapt some of these sort of 1950s-style gigantic houses that, you know, is really not very reflective of how most people, families comp, composition anymore? Maybe, you know, explore ways to adapt some of these existing places so that they can become.
When you say, who's "we" adapting them?
Planning Commission.
Well, but builders would have, people would have to invest in that, right?
But we, we would create regulations that would enable it.
Encourage that?
Yeah, either encourage it or just make it, you know, something that could be happen, that could happen.
Probably not something that would flow too well. I mean, if we went into your neighborhood, and said we're going to make everything available to be a duplex, the neighbors may not be.
Well, there's, you know, there are definitely big challenges that, there's homeowners' association rules and all sorts of obstacles. But one area that we can immediately leverage, I think, is accessory dwelling units, which are by right in the state. And we have some, compared to other places, our regulations for accessory dwelling units are not very, they don't really incentivize the use of them.
I'm having a learning experience on my own property right now, which I'll discuss later.
And I think that this does get to the point that, I think it was, and that you brought up around growth and density focus into the growth area one and two. And if that were to be one of our guiding principles or something that's in there, then that would, as we're going through the plan, would help us to put a focus on, well, how, what are ways that we can increase density in those areas, or what does smart growth look like? It would be smart growth.
Well, one, one thing we could do is, you know, we're, we now have some familiarity with form-based zoning from the Route 7 corridor. And, you know, one of the things that could come out of this is, you know, kind of some appetite to expand that to other parts of the town as a tool for thinking like, well, what, what could we do, you know?
Let's go back to what Perry was saying so eloquently. I don't know if we have it up there yet, but to preserve the rural feel and character of the town, because we could lose it. We are so close to South Burlington and Burlington, that we could just be, what some people say, a bedroom town. But really, we're not just a bedroom town. We're also what you found when you came here. But if, if we let go of, of, if we make our zoning such that it's easier and easier to, you know, develop the rural district or the, and to lose those long views of either the lake or the mountains, the meadows, if we lose it, you never get it back. And it's part of what attracts people and keeps people.
Well, that's why it's important to intervene now, to avoid those, you know, series of adverse impacts. But I think, you know, clustering and, and being very specific about where we want the growth to happen, and, and as equally specific about where we want to discourage it, is what we need to do. So that would suggest, you know, maybe something like an official map is a great tool for, for that kind of thing. And that would also allow us to plan for future infrastructure, so that, you know, Falls Road is not bearing all of the traffic, because there's no other place for people to, you know, there's no other thoroughfares to use.
We have to be careful in all this conversation about "we" in planning, that we respect that much property is privately owned, and to respect private property owners, and think about what it's like from their point of view, if they hold a piece of property, real property, and it's valuable.
I think it'd be a good idea for the Planning Commission to stroll through some of these little neighborhoods, too, that we're talking about changing, just to, not just to drive through, but to take a walk through and see how they actually function, and what makes them what they are.
I wouldn't disagree with that.
So what's, what is our goal for tonight with this thing?
The objective was this thing, and there, there was an hour dedicated to it. A lot of this is to determine what the vision is in order to set the tone for the rest of the work that we're doing on the plan. Was, is that an accurate reflection of others' perspectives?
You're saying we're going to, we're trying to come out tonight with that vision statement?
Not, not specifically, more just to get those, we've been talking about the big ideas, and that was the, okay, everybody think about where we want to go with this, and let's get all this on paper. And then ideally, if we could weight these and say, well, what are our priorities? Dean had previously shared word clouds and that sort of thing, based on documents that show what are the, like, in our current town plan, what are the big, bigger things that show up in terms of occurrence and that sort of thing, to help drive that creative process. There was, there had been points raised previously, and, and I know that the, Dean may have the current vision statement up as well, or available as well, but the, the idea was, what we have may need to be refined. So how do we go about doing that? And instead of just looking at the current vision statement and saying, okay, how do we refine this? Let's think about, well, what is it that, the, what is it that we want? Like, what, what is it that we're thinking, having thought about this stuff? And how do we drive that towards that revision of the vision statement? What the vision statement actually looks like is a separate thing, and that's where I indicated that it could be a, a phrase, a paragraph, sometimes it's a whole page. I tend to favor shorter succinct ones, but it's, the first step is to figure out what concepts we want in that. And that's what this exercise is about.
I had it there, but I, I know that there are some mixed feelings about the existing vision, but if people really wanted to see what it is as a reference point.
I'll just comment, I, I'll just comment that when I was going through and taking notes and just kind of getting some ideas together, right before this meeting, I did read the, the previous vision statement, which I'd read before. And I, there are good concepts in it, but it's what would we want? So I think it was, it's wise, I think, to have this discussion the way that we're having it, without the influence of that, just to say, and, and it could turn out that a lot of those same concepts are in the current vision, which makes the revision process a lot easier. But it could be that the ideas that we're coming up with and what's important to the town now, and where we're going, is slightly different, so that would color our revision.
When was that, the last?
Seven.
Vision statement created?
That, that vision statement was, was written during the process of the plan being adopted in about 2012.
Yeah, so it's not that old.
No, it's not, it's not really old.
I thought you were going to tell me the Revolutionary War or something.
But those of us who were on the Planning Commission at the time, a couple of us were, recall that the process was pretty much hijacked by the Select Board, who chucked out everything we had done and rewrote the vision statement themselves, which they can do, because they passed, you know, they pass it. And we were not impressed with what they came up with.
But nonetheless, it still is not that old, whoever.
It's not that old, but we don't have any great affection for it.
We're not tied to it too closely.
I mean.
Some of those are still irritated by the experience.
Obviously, yes.
Yes.
I mean, if we step back a little bit, I mean, there was, in the early discussion about the need to update the town plan, there were ideas suggested about the format, and it was really clear people wanted a more accessible format. So we looked at different plans, and the plan that people gravitated towards was the one in Ferrisburg. And the Ferrisburg town plan doesn't have a quote "vision statement." It has these guiding principles, which, depending on how you write your vision statement, could just be the vision statement written in pieces. But be that as it may, you know, that alpha version that I did of that based on our existing goals, didn't really have the benefit of this kind of conversation. And so at least you now have the benefit of having had this conversation. I'm still not sure whether or not you want to have a vision statement, per se, and just inject it in the Ferrisburg format, if you are still thinking you want to follow the Ferrisburg format. But that's, that's another question. You aren't going to write the vision, a vision statement tonight. I guess the question is, do you want someone to write a vision statement? Or is what came about as a result of this, this list, and, and maybe you want to prioritize?
Yeah, and that's, well, exposing my thoughts. The plan that we have now has the vision statement, and then it has a set of goals. The Ferrisburg plan had the.
Guiding principles.
The guiding principles. And knowing how these conversations can go, we really just need to get momentum and set a foundation, so that we can start making progress in putting the whole plan together. Because if we don't have, if we, if we can't make a decision to say, all right, we're going to have, here's our vision, and everything else is going to fall into place based on that, maybe based on this exercise, we decide, well, a, a full, big vision statement isn't necessarily the big thing. Maybe we just need to focus on key objectives. Maybe some of these big ideas are less concepts that you put into a vision statement, and they're more, these are the guiding principles that we want to go with. Because there are some really good phrases up there, and some great points from everybody. So I think the first thing is just to get these out there and see where we're, where we're headed. I don't know if we want to take a stab at putting a, like, a weight next to them or something, like a one, two, or a three, with one being, we feel strongly that this is it, three is, well, we obviously like it, because. it, three is, well, we obviously like it because we put it up there, but.
It, we could do that, I could email this, get it to the printer, people can, I mean, it's gonna be just a little practical challenge to have people put numbers to this, but we can make it simpler if we want to do it that way.
Can we get a copy of the vision statement and the vision statement that Planning wrote, maybe emailed to us? Just for.
Oh, like our old one?
It'll take a little bit longer for me to find that.
I probably have it.
We did like it, yeah.
I mean, do you mean like right now?
No, no, no.
We were so bad.
Sometime in the next.
We were like, what?
We should revisit that.
Yes, I mean, we can certainly find what was sent to the Select Board. Yeah.
You know, if we go back to process just for a minute, instead of the guiding principles and the substance of our goals, what's interesting about the Hubbardton town plan that is a prize winner is how succinct it is. If this thing takes 38 pages, is it a small town? Yes. Are we a small town? Well, in Vermont scale, we're considered a big town, but we're still a small town. And if we could think, if we, if we could sort of constrain ourselves to think, wouldn't it be nice if we could come up with a 38-page, call it 40, 48, 40-page comprehensive plan? It would be succinct, it would probably not have a vision statement, it would probably have goals, you know, a goal for this, a goal for that, and these things would fit under it in order to accomplish getting the 12 elements in. But if it's attractive, it's, if it's short and readable by the town, they're not gonna read one, you know, like we'd have now. We have one volume, we have two volumes, and then we have a book of maps. The town residents, it's not fair to expect them that they know what, what's in there.
It's not fair to have the Planning Board read that.
So if we think, if we make ourselves think, you know, tight and succinct and with illustrations as well, it's very possible that as we are constrained by having the 12 elements, because we have to have them in there or they're just gonna ship it back to us from the regional Planning Commission.
Last week, last time, Ali Crone was here, and he said that we can be very creative about how we meet those.
Yes, yes.
So we, you know, we're not.
Yeah, you don't need to have Chapter 1 energy, Chapter 2 population growth, or anything like that.
Yeah.
No, but we have to have the elements, and we better put them in bold print if we want people to see them. Anyway, I'm just trying to make a pitch for, simple and short is good.
So where is this?
And it gets more people involved if they don't think they have to, you know, meet three times for 90 minutes each to discuss economic development to get it into a paragraph.
And that's where, well, I think the challenge that you saw really early on and why picking a direction and heading in it is really important, I, I just, I read the Hubbardton one as well, and I, I appreciate the succinctness, I like that a lot.
And that's what we thought about Ferrisburg when we first saw that, and that was, I don't know, 78 or 90.
What has prevented, I realize this town has a lot of history, I was reading about, you know, 2,000 years ago, people by the shores, but Ann is right in stating, like, people have no attention span, and this was 40 pages with a lot of, like, pictures of fields and meadows. If it's about just getting into the core elements, what has prevented the town in the past from having a document that is this short?
Partly because it's farmed out, wouldn't you say, to different committees? This committee, you write this, and you committee, you write that, and then they put in all of their wants.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it has anything to do with that, Ann, I think it has to do with the fact that.
Maybe you hire a consultant then.
Well, it, it does reflect the fact that, yes, there was a consultant who was working with the Planning Commission in the early, mid 2000s, and I think it does have his fingerprints on it. The thing about comprehensive plans is that there, there's a lot of responsibility that's placed on them in statute, and there's a lot of responsibility that's placed on the plan even in our own regulations. The plan is a requirement for regulations, so it really needs to provide the kind of guidance that the Planning Commission will want to have when it's writing regulations. Because if it's not there, if the discussions don't take place and are reflected in the plan so that it's easier to write the regulations or modify them, then they're going to take place later. So there's a reason why it is that it's as long as it is because the material is material that Planning Commissions use. And as I was starting to say, there's a lot of burden placed on comprehensive plans in the Act 250 process, there are things that have been inserted in the plan because the town hopes to have more opportunity to control the outcome in the Public Service Board process. A comprehensive plan is a, it's just a document that has all these burdens, and really what a lot of people want is a document that is a distillation of the plan, that just is something that they can create, that the community can like and adore, and then they have this other thing that meets all the statutory requirements. That's, that's my view. With the, the, the plan for the town of Ferrisburg has more of those, it does more of those statutory things than the town for Hubbardton does, but Hubbardton doesn't, doesn't go after trying to participate in the Public Service Board process like we have. I mean, we have the, we have the policy on noise because of Section 248, we have the stuff on telecommunications because of Section 248. There's all the natural resource stuff as a part of an emphasis to participate in Act 250. And when those things aren't there, then they're not there. We can't go to a hearing and say, well, we thought about these things when we wrote the plan. If it's not there, it's not there, and it won't get the weight.
So there is a basis for needing the detail. Keeping it short is, is great, but at the same time, my question is, what is it used for? And if primarily it's used to defend bylaws and that, that sort of thing, I, I enjoyed, I enjoyed sitting down and reading some of these plans because it gives you a sense of the town, and even ours, there's a great history, and you get an idea of where the objectives are and where it is that we're going. Making it a bit shorter would be fantastic, but as long as you have a document that's, has a good table of contents and it's organized well and it's easy for somebody to navigate, I think that the, the volume of it, you just want to make sure that the content that you have is quality and not just have a lot of fluff in it. And that's where I think when we get into more of editing and deciding what needs to be in and out, you have your core stuff that has to be in there, you may have some additional things that provide good color and context, but there could be a lot of stuff that doesn't necessarily have to be there.
Right, can be someplace else in an appendix or what have you.
Right.
Yeah, and if things are, as far as the legal impact, whatever document that you have, if it goes through the hearing process, then it can be part of the plan. So some communities will have a plan and then they'll say, well, here's an appendix, but they won't take that appendix through the hearing process, and so it really isn't part of the plan. But you could have a document that's 40 pages long and then have two or three appendices, and as long as those appendices go through the hearing process, they're part of the plan. So you could, you know, basically have this document that everybody really likes, and that's the one that people refer to 90% of the time. And then as long as these other things are adopted and they go through the process, they don't clutter up the document, you could still have the impact.
So you're saying that we could write a short succinct plan
With a bunch of appendices.
More accessible to the town and attaches appendices all of the prior town plans that has everything in it?
Well, I don't think you'd want to do the prior town lines, but some, some of the logic of the Volume 1, Volume 2 was that there was the policy piece that everybody's gonna use on them a regular basis, and then there's the narrative stuff, the data that informed the policies, but most of the time, people were gonna pick up the policies. It's just that they ended up at being roughly the same size. If you had the policy piece, 30 pages, and, you know, a demographic piece, and a natural resource piece, and a transportation piece, you know, they could be however long they want, as long as they go through the hearing process.
I like that idea.
They've already approved, they've already approved, warning the hearing. We didn't know. I don't, did you respond to my email with the, I'll see you there?
No, I just assumed I'd come. So I missed it?
Well, the hearing has been worn for the 25th.
Well, nice to see you all.
Sorry.
If you had a big point or anything to make, we could.
No, no, I was just, just being here.
Due diligence.
Coming in support, yeah.
Thanks.
Sure thing.
But yes, you can, you could have it, it, you then just get into these discussions sometimes where if it's an appendix, sometimes people are less concerned about its content, but you should be because it's part of the plan. But then sometimes the adoption process can be bogged down because the, just the more material you have, the more things there are that people who are deciding to approve it or not could take issue with. Do you want to try, try to do some ranking or rating of these?
I'm, I'm not sure, because you make a good point. I mean, it's, it's not that we're gonna go through each one of these and get consensus necessarily. I was trying to think through it when you mentioned that, that if we had a list, I don't know, maybe you and I could talk offline on how best we might be able to distill this. A thought that popped into my head is if we had, you know, you put this into a Google Sheet and have a column for each person's name, and they rank them, and then we look at, you know, how does everything kind of balance out?
Yeah, or you could even have, and, you know, spaces for two or three additional ideas that you just thought of since.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we could create a, a survey, basically, a scoring system.
An example of something that we haven't, that we would think, might think of later is that we haven't mentioned utilities, which is one of the great driving costs. I mean, we still have sewer bonds to pay off over, you know, like, 12 years, and we're starting to talk about bonds for a bridge and bonds for this and for the library. But just the infrastructure of water, sewer, and stormwater, somehow, they need recognition in, in what we see as a vision or as a guiding principle, because we want them to be efficient and not that, we want them to be efficient because they are high-cost things.
Absolutely, and.
I say things, I don't know what else to call them, but.
Well, to the degree that a lot of those, that infrastructure drives or enables development, it's, and settlement patterns, it's really important that we, I think, if we can kind of, I'd like to see the rewrite lead to a more integration of, of all of this, this discussion, so that there's a bit more awareness of how all of these things contribute to the, this larger, you know, what, what does this add up to in the aggregate? Because I think that the town plan right now is very, you know, there are just all these different buckets, and it's kind of hard to see what the big picture is. I also think that it's, a lot of the really good ideas are kind of buried in the existing town plan, and so I think maybe just even using the format that we have rather than reinventing the wheel, and, and maybe everybody could just take a run through it and see if there are areas where it seems redundant, or this dean's idea about appendices might work, just to kind of streamline it, so that the overall document, the policy document, is a little bit more appealing and engaging and shorter, so somebody can really kind of get a snapshot of what, that, what we're, we're trying to achieve. And then if they want more, you know, information, we have, have a number of appendices we need to have. But right now, all of that is kind of, there's not a lot of differentiation, I think, in the, in the document.
That is definitely something that I plan on spending a bit more time with. I mean, last summer I did read it. It's not, not the kind of document you just think, oh, yeah, I'm gonna go pick that up and start skimming, but, yeah. These big ideas and concepts, and I think, Ann, you've hit on it, and I fully agree, that we want to encourage smart development, both from a density standpoint, from a population perspective, but also from a business development perspective. In the Hubbardton plan, they had one of their things was, we want to attract a winery. We have one of those, but what types of ideas like that might Shelburne benefit from or that would help to improve the community? There, there was an article in Shelburne News today about a lot of the great stuff that Fiddlehead's been doing. The impact that some businesses can have on a community that help aid in the identity and the good that that community can do is, that's important, and I think that it's in all of our best interests to attract businesses that are gonna pursue the same ideals that the town would have. So some of these ideas, to me, I don't know that developers necessarily go through and sit and look through a town plan, but if you have a town plan that outlines, this is what Shelburne represents, and this is, this is what we're trying to attract, then that could be attractive to developers looking to do certain things, or people looking to move to a new spot because of proximity, but yet space, smart growth, infrastructure. Pieces start falling into place when we have good drivers behind it, and I think that that's what the plan is supposed to outline. Are we kind of bent on ideas?
I think so.
I think the only question I'll ask is, do we have any budget for hiring a consultant? If we say, we've got, we want to copy the, cover these topics, we want these elements, and we want it short and concise, can we hire?
This isn't a project that, you could, the Planning Commission could apply for a grant, but it is, the amount of money that's in the budget is the matching amount. So if we assume a project, you know, let's say $20,000, $25,000, I forget what the amount was for a generic planning project. The matching funds were included in the budget, we just, we have to put together an application when the applications are due, and we have to get it. We've had some applications in the last couple of years, and they have not been funded. There is, there is this tendency for towns, after a couple of failures, to get it funded. So we don't have the money or a grant for the full amount yet, but it could be the focus of a grant application. It'll slow, well, that would not be money that we could access until next, probably next January, so.
Maybe that should be on an agenda, an agenda item sometime?
To apply for it when the time comes?
Yeah, just to discuss whether we want some third party to maybe lay it out, and then we react to it and change it and redact it and review it and revise it, I don't know.
It would be, yeah.
Is that an agenda item for Planning Commission?
To look for a grant, to bring a consultant?
To talk about whether or not we want a third party, whether we want a outside consultant
That hadn't come up previously when you were talking about making the, adapting the plan to follow the Ferrisburg model. I think people were talking about dividing up the task and not necessarily hiring, hiring a consultant. That could be, you know, you could talk about it, decide.
We could have a, I mean, would it work to have a 10 or 15-minute discussion on a future agenda just to say, now that we've had a couple of these meetings, do we, do we need outside help, or are we on a path? And by the time that agenda meeting comes up, we will have made a bit more progress that may color that conversation.
Certainly can tee it up.
I mean, I think, I think that if what I'm hearing from you is that you'd have to apply, and any, any money that may come from that exercise may not be even available until January, and we need to be pretty far along by then.
Yeah, that's, that's right. I mean, it, that would be the case. Yeah, the, the primary funding source for a project like this would be the Municipal Planning Grant Program, and those, I believe, are going to be due in August or something like that, and they typically, August or September, and they typically take, the announcements are usually in late November or December, and the earliest you can expect contracts is, I think, January. So that would be January of 2018, and the Planning Commission's hearings would have to be pretty much done by October or November so that the Select Board can have things ready to adopt February 2019.
So it sounds like that'll keep this document pretty succinct if we're writing it.
That's true. You have a deadline?
That we do. Well, if we, to have that on a future agenda, that doesn't need a. Well, if we, to have that on a future agenda, that doesn't need a motion or anything, does it?
It'd be something you and Jamie...
Talk to Jamie, if he doesn't want to do it, you know, I'll let you know.
All right. Well, I think we've got a lot of, a lot of good ideas down. As far as where we take this, I'll, I can follow up Dean and we can see how best to filter and...
Yeah, it would be, while it's fresh, if you had time tomorrow, we could plan a call or Monday. I mean, I just think the sooner we can connect.
Tomorrow or Monday, yeah. One of those two. I'll, yeah, can I send you a note in the morning? Okay. All right. So I don't believe, since I still have the training wheels on, I don't think there's, needs to be a motion or anything to move on to the next. So the next discussion item is form-based zoning phase two?
And this is really an opportunity for Planning Commissioners to react to what was in the memo from Brandy and if you think she's on the wrong track, I, now's the time. And if you are okay with the track, then it's really about getting the word out.
Yeah, the, well, thoughts on getting the word out, I imagine, the standards of Shelburne News, Front Porch Forum, that kind of thing?
And card mailing, we did, we did one card mailing to about 300 addresses and I've expected, I'm expecting to do another one for this because this is the major public involvement, major public meeting for this project. And assuming we're on track, those will go out tomorrow.
Okay, excellent. And just for a review for everybody, the ideas for this, for the community meeting on May 11th, there were four, four topics where we're looking for public feedback. And really, unless there were any, well, first, are there any concepts or any discussion points on any of the four topics that are listed that anybody has coming up?
I'm not sure why stormwater is in there. I think it's something we have to deal with, no matter what we, it looks like they're asking, should we forego treating stormwater in favor of...
No.
Well, I thought that we had done a pretty good job of going after stormwater and treating it the best that we can.
This is expanding on that.
So they're looking for a stricter?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Says it's competing.
I didn't read it, but yeah, it does say it's competing with...
Competing for lot space and all these other things that we thought were desirable.
Right, that's why I thought it was sort of going after it in a different way.
Right, so I, I think there needs to be more, you know, flexibility about how goals are met. It's one of my concerns.
Yeah, I was thinking that elevation, you know, smaller footprints, more elevation seem to be the only thing we would consider.
You know, this is about the need for green space to accommodate stormwater may work against the goal of promoting compact, high-density development. How should these competing goals be reconciled? They should absolutely not be competing. I mean, that's, that's crazy because that's just going to increase sprawl. And we want to, you know, we want to encourage redevelopment. One of the things we want to do is make as much use as possible to add infill development that incorporates housing and in more, more variety and more flexible configurations. And that works completely against that.
Right.
So that's, that's been a concern of mine, that that is a principle that has not been understood sufficiently from the get-go. And we also have the green, the green corridor, you know? I mean, I think we need to look, take a more watershed approach to this and come up with some way, we're going to have a stormwater utility, maybe we can't do this right of way, but down the road, we should be thinking about, can ecosystem function be provided by some of those big, massive properties that are not going to be densifying any further? And it's exactly where you want to have the protection because the more we can do around the impaired stream, the better. So it's just, it seems like a very, to have this be very site by site by site is going to just, you know, it's just going to be sprawl central. I, you know, this just seems very unimaginative, this approach.
On the particular topic of stormwater?
Yes.
Yeah, I...
You don't like it, huh, Kate?
No, I just, I, you know...
That sentence stood out to me as well and I agree with you. I don't think that the, the concept should be, are we, how do we reconcile these two things? I think it's, to me, it was more, and there are some ideas here, on what are some ideas about how to handle it? Because we know that we need to have stormwater management, we do have that in the regulations even for form-based, but what are some ideas, either be, like you said, smaller footprint on the building, go higher. If you're looking at form-based and you have your green infrastructure, like a hedgerow of bushes or whatever it is that you're going to do in order to sequester stormwater, that there needs to be continuity across businesses, like say on Route 7 or something. You can't just have, one lot has great, a great stormwater containment feature and then the lot right next door doesn't and then the lot next to that does. There needs to be some kind of continuity, I think, and I think that was the idea behind form-based zoning, to start to facilitate that.
Mm-hmm.
The question in my mind, though, is if we have people come in and we're broken up into groups and we're talking about this topic, I imagine that the consultants would have ideas on how to guide that conversation? I would just want to ensure that the concept is really nailed down, that we're not looking to reconcile anything, we're just trying to look for ideas of how do we maintain stormwater efficiently? And also do the development that we're, that we would like to do?
Well, like, you know, one of the things, you know, share, there can be shared systems between sites, you know, that creates inefficiency right there. And like I said, you know, there should be some off-site opportunities. And frankly, if we have a stormwater utility that potentially offers the ability for the people who are providing that ecosystem function to get some kind of credit for doing so under the utility, you know, it's, it's outsourced to their property. And why not, you know, assign a value to that and reward, and monetary value to that?
Are we expecting laypeople to come up with ideas like you just said?
No, this is the consultants.
They'll have the idea and then people react to it?
Because I, I, it looks like they're looking for some direction and they've identified some problems. I, I mean, we knew these problems existed. I'm a little surprised that they're not coming up with solutions to these problems. I mean, I'm certainly working on this myself, but...
Well, you have creative ideas and it comes from a basis of knowledge on your part, but I'm just thinking about ordinary people who are invited to come. On what basis would they know how to suggest GSI or...
Well, that, the, this may be much too technically oriented for the average person to be interested.
Yeah, and this is, this is really not necessarily the thing that they would be handing out. This is, this is framing, you know, it's pointing out the four topics that they want to address and how they think right now they would frame them, but it isn't a handout for the general public. But what I'm hearing are the kinds of comments that would influence the materials that they do hand out to the public. I think some of the specific ideas that they have on stormwater, there's going to, Kate has, has mentioned this idea of systems oriented beyond the individual lot stormwater treatment for a couple of years now. It's, 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 it's an idea that I associate with Kate and not really too many other people. And I think the consultants are aware of that, but I think they recognize that given the way this, it's not just the town that's regulating stormwater, it's really the state and the state has a lot more of people's attentions than the town's regulations do, that they're thinking about, well, until we are at a point where we could use a system-wide off-lot stormwater treatment system, what are we going to do? What are the procedures? How will we balance between, I think some of what they're doing in this paper is pointing out that we won't have that revised system overnight.
Well, but the regulations could be written in a way that anticipates them in, at some point in the future.
Yeah, I think that the thing is, is that the developers are going to have two masters. They'll have the town and then they'll have the state and, you know, even if we have the, well, yes, we could have a section of the regulations that we are just waiting around for them to have a utility, when, no pun intended, but they'll have some effect when the state allows these kinds of things. But right now, there's no state system for the kinds of thing that we're talking about. And so a developer may look at this and say, oh, Shelburne would allow me to do this system-wide stormwater treatment, but the state doesn't or it's just going to take me too much time convincing them to allow it, so I'm going to design it on, on property. And unless we prohibit it, you know, unless we come up with a system for mandating it, I'm not sure how that would work. I don't think that they were, the consultants here who wrote this up were ready to go, to go there, but maybe the response is, is that there should, it should be mandated.
Well, here, they say, could the regulations create an incentive for shared stormwater systems on land that is suitable for that use? So...
That should be the...
That's the question right there, yes. I would say yes. The answer to that question is yes, most assuredly. Do not hesitate to get on that immediately.
And I think, Anne, to your point, I, I had the same concern was if we're breaking up into groups with whoever shows up, where are these ideas coming from? But having exactly what we just went through and having these lists, I could see people sitting in on a, on a discussion saying, well, yeah, I like that idea, well, what about this? And then if you have a basis, you can expand the conversation and get input. I'm just curious how that part would be administered.
Maybe it should just be plenary and not broken up into groups.
In that, yeah, I first wanted to see if anybody had comments about the specific things we did on stormwater. Were there any others? Because format was the other point I wanted to discuss.
Yeah, it would be good to get, to buy into the format.
Yeah. So we've got those four ideas. The format was, and I think what is suggested is...
We'll have both of these rooms, the barrier will be down, we'll have to try to figure out the cameras and what she was looking for was a space that was large enough that we could divide up into four groups. I think at one point, there was even this thought given to having each of the four groups deal with the four topics and I thought that was asking a lot. So she gravitated towards this idea of having groups on each topic.
And pros, cons either way, it would just, my thought as I was thinking about this is it would be unfortunate if you have, I mean, how do those groups get divided? Do you say, here's the stormwater table, here's the building materials table? And is one table going to end up empty because nobody wants to talk about building height? Like...
Yeah, and...
That looks like the easy one.
She and I talked about that. She defaulted, she, Brandy defaulted to the idea that, well, it could be one of those meetings where you're assigned, you have, you, when you walk in, you get something and then at a certain point, they say, now look at the thing and you have an A, a B, a C, or a D, and that's where you go. And that's, that's the way to make sure that the groups are equally sized. But you also don't take advantage of people having interests, you know? I like the idea of someone who's got a really strong interest and maybe you allowed trade, you allowed trading, you know, for a limited period of time.
It's a Yankee swap, yeah.
Well, I mean, I know I'm going to want to weigh in on every single one of these things.
Well, and then while we're talking about that, that her approach looks to commissioners as having a role as facilitators or at least being there along with the consultants to help the conversation going. So this is, you know, where she says, set up the tables, yeah, four tables with Planning Commissioners, so you'll be spread out. Now, I don't, you're not going to be prevented from saying what you think, but you'll have a special status as Planning Commissioners.
And just having this conversation, because I was going to, my intent was to lobby for having each group touch on all topics, just because that would get better coverage for the group, for whoever shows up. But if each group, if people are assigned letters and there's the 20 to 30-minute presentation on all four topics, the breakout happens and if I'm understanding this correctly, that approach would enable more time at the end to discuss them as a whole group than if, let's say, you end up, or somebody ends up on the building materials, but they really want to talk about stormwater, then at the end, there would still be, here are the ideas that came up with stormwater and there's an opportunity from the group to raise hands and throw out other stuff. So I think it, it may just enable a bit of a deeper dive on each one of these things.
Well, that was, that's a benefit I see is that if you don't have groups talking about all four things, you can maybe get some progress. If, if people are assembled and they have 10 minutes to talk about something, are you really going to get much?
Right. Yeah, because the momentum starts to happen as people get more engaged and more ideas come out. Well, unless there's any objections to the format of groups divided into the four as this is laid out, if there aren't, then I think we're probably good on this topic. The cards, you said, will...
Cards will go out tomorrow, knock on wood.
Cool. Who do they go to?
We had a list of about 300 property owners who were selected using GIS from the railroad tracks or to the, from the lake to about 400 feet. It was basically the, the study area.
Okay.
I think it's 300 plus.
And then Shelburne News?
Well, there was, I did have a conversation and there was a news item that is in the current edition, but it kind of made tonight look like the meeting and I had told them that the community meeting is, so I'm thinking there will be a follow-up. There's been one Front Porch Forum post, there'll be some others, they'll be mentioned in the Town Managers. I'm hoping that there will be a more substantive article in the next Shelburne News.
That's the one they had today, didn't work.
Yeah.
All right, so the next agenda is the hiking, biking, and walking map. Good timing. All right, so open it up for comments. Are there any thoughts on...
So one of the things, just to make clear, you, you are looking at, in your packets, the earlier version and then today, I received the version that's being projected and that Joanna has copies of right now.
Yeah, I've got two copies. We're sort of revising this as we go. I got a brand-new copy from Pam Brangin and updated it accordingly.
I'll share, we three will share.
I have one key, unfortunately.
Same key, that was on before.
Oh, oh.
No, it's a different key. So each...
I didn't make one copy, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought Joanna was bringing copies, I didn't make one earlier just so I could see, so here's one more.
Okay. All right, so here's another key.
So is this mutually different? Yeah, it is.
It's updated. The old one had all the existing trails and all the proposed trails on it. This one has only the existing trails. I met with the Paths Committee and they said, we can't show the proposed trails because we don't know if they're going to work. So we stripped it back to the existing infrastructure. And then I put in all of these things that the Natural Resources Committee had on their list.
Oh, and then dotted them here.
And then dotted them.
I see you've labeled Bay Road, that's helpful.
So if you want to see how they compare...
And instead of having that blue, heavy blue line for the railroad, the railroad now looks like what it is. It's not a pedestrian pass.
Joanna, what, what about just putting on here just what destinations? I guess, I guess it's done with numbers. But, but, but things like, I don't know, maybe there's some places where, we had that view, was it the view map? We have an old map that talks about...
Destinations and...
Yeah, just, just like some great views, you know? There's some, we have some wonderful prospects, you know? Maybe that could be on there. Wasn't there like some kind of...
There's a significant use map, that's it, just to make it super easy.
The north side of the river would be over here.
Just, there's something existing that if you wanted to take a look at and you could sort of think about it.
The river flows here.
You know, just, just...
So this is the Falls Bridge.
Do you have that?
This is a river.
The significant use map is, dates to 1990, it's in the town.
I was looking for it down here.
It must be the bridge. That must be the bridge that goes up.
Well, it's this new little bridge that, you know, has been discussed so much. Well, it's this new little bridge that, you know, has been discussed so much.
It must be Joplin's Trail.
To replace...
There are, there, there is a different...
The log across the border.
It's part of a, a different project that has something that may be more useful. It's not, it's not included in the plan, but it shows significant use. But it has locations and then it has arrows indicating where the views are. So, maybe something like that would be more useful.
Yeah, I mean, it, maybe, it might add to the clutter, and this is a huge improvement, so much clearer. But I was just thinking, there are a couple of, a couple of advantage points that have some just killer views, you know?
Sure. I just need some reference with your tree on the left.
It used to actually go, it used to be a trail, and we used to go through there and it would come out.
The significant views, I mean, I remember using that map back in the Velco...
There is a trail that comes out over by Webster's.
Power line thing.
It was part of the RPC discussion that we had as well.
We're talking about the same one, I, I just want to make sure that we know, we're learning that it's...
We've got one neighbor, yeah.
How do you pronounce her first name, Joanna?
It's going to look something like...
The first one.
Joanna? So, yeah, is, is, is that going, can you incorporate that? Is that what you were thinking, or are you thinking of something else?
No, no, it comes, and you, you can see it on computer the day before.
I was just thinking of a couple of key spots, I'm just imagining somebody cycling along or driving to, you know, arriving at the town and, and just, just, you know, hey, pull over and, you know, take a look at this, just a couple of spots, yeah. You know?
Do you have a list?
Police department.
That's what I think would be appropriate.
Kind of go through that map and see what...
Police department, sometimes...
Yeah, again, the idea of meshing something like this with all of these areas that are areas with...
Oh, yeah, yeah, they, they work good. I see your point, Kate, about some...
Was, is there like right up, Webster Road, like right up in here?
Do you want to use the pointer, or?
Did you? Dean, oh, Dean, if you wouldn't mind going back to that views map, I think I saw that correctly. So, like right there at Webster Road, there's, there's like a kind of confluence of, you know, maybe just highlighting, putting a circle around that intersection, just like, you know, great, yeah, you know, like just great views here, you know?
Yes, I've heard this before.
And then, let's see, so that would be one...
So, they've been tasked with coming up with a map.
And, and I'm thinking, just on a couple of public right-of-ways, not in Shelburne Farms, I mean, that would just get way into it. Let's see, up at Irish Hill...
Oh, this isn't real.
Well, I think it's also to balance against, well, it's not that it's going to get really congested or anything. I get the idea of planting a pin or saying something where scenic view, but if you have a tourist that's looking at this and they drive up to the top of Irish Hill, right, there's no place really to go.
It is, it's called a byway, Vermont byway.
I don't know if that, right, same thing with Shelburne Falls.
Okay. All right, that was just a thought.
No, I, I think that's a very good thought. One thing that, that I had was Shelburne Beach.
Yeah, I have that right here.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so then that just...
Can you see?
Oh, I screwed it up. Shelburne Beach.
Yeah.
Shelburne Bay Boat Launch.
Yeah, it's number 12.
Well, that, yeah, that's different.
The number, the numbering's a little off. It, it says Bread and Butter Farm, and probably should say, and says Bread and Butter Farm down there.
Bread and Butter is 15, but Bread and Butter is listed twice.
Oh, Bread and Butter Farm, no, that's Beach.
Right, it's just listed twice.
Did I screw it up?
Yeah. You have Bread and Butter Farm.
Yeah, okay.
That's probably the one that should be Beach, right?
Yeah, it is.
There's Bread and Butter on here.
Does the word show somewhere?
Joanna, actually, I think this is, this is great, I mean, it really gives a wonderful overview.
Yeah, it says twice.
Too much to go into views and stuff.
So, update the first Bread and Butter to a Beach and...
There you go.
Now, I have a question. Yep. When I read this, which is the older material, the first thing I came to was the word trail, including Joplin James's new trail, I thought, oh, trail, let's see what color are trails? Trails aren't even mentioned.
Ah, they're right here.
The fine...
Primitive path. Well, I think you better, I thought those were very distinctly different. I thought that was like up at Collimer Circle and Pearson Drive, you know, that primitive path thing.
That's one right here. It goes down from the bridge and goes all the way, comes out behind the ice hut.
I think you, I don't think you can use the word trail here and then have us look for it here and not find it. So, maybe primitive path slash trail.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Or trail slash primitive path.
What, what is Joplin's Trail? Is that where the bridge is?
That is along the north side of the river down here.
This little teeny dot?
It knows, it comes along this side.
Oh, okay.
I haven't had it yet.
Who's Joplin?
He's the head of the paths committee, Joplin James.
And you're on the committee?
No.
Oh.
But I've been talking to them as well.
Oh, you're a consultant.
He's a member.
Well, he used to be on the natural resources committee when we started.
Wendy is the chair.
Now, I'm no longer on the committee, but I'm seeing it through as a fish.
Good, good for you.
So, 12 is Shelburne.
That's okay.
12 is Shelburne Beach.
So, being mindful of time on, are we, the only other comment I had just to, to think through was, I know that it was, there were the, like Bread and Butter Farm, New Village, and Fisher Brothers. I just wasn't sure if we had them listed on this map, would there be other businesses that might have said, hey, well, we would have a thing as well?
Perhaps they shouldn't be on the map.
Yeah, it's just more, is, is that going to cause contention, or, or is that a good thing to have there?
Well, we talk about the Bread and Butter Farm and we talk about the New Village Farm because they...
They were related to conservation projects.
Oh, perfect.
Is the Fisher Brothers Farm anything?
No, it's not, it's not, it doesn't have the same background as a conservation project. I mean, if, we have to remind ourselves, this is a map in the open space land, and it should have that kind of connection.
Should New Village Farm be right?
But in the case of New Village and Bread and Butter, town funds went towards the conservation.
Oh, great, so that makes sense.
On the other hand, to your, to your point about places to stop, you, you could actually ride your bike, you could walk, and there's, there's a place to, to pull over and...
The trail.
So, it depends on what the purpose is, right?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Oh, this, the Thai Hall. Should we put, should we put the vineyard on there if we're going to have Fisher Brothers? That seems to make sense.
Why would Fisher Brothers be on there?
Why not? Because we're supporting them, we, we support integrated agriculture and farming.
Because it's a business and the other businesses we want...
So, I think, maybe we could sell space.
Advertising, excuse me. Advertising, I, I don't... That, that was why I brought it up, was, it, it makes sense if there are businesses that have ties to conservation land that the town has supported, because then that ties everything back. But as soon as you, it's not to knock Fisher Brothers at all, but as soon as you add a business that doesn't fit that criteria, are there going to be other businesses that say, well, why was I left out?
Right, and there's funny maple...
All right, I was just, just want to be on the record for saying, it does increase the community's appeal, which I thought we were supposed to be doing.
Why not offer...
Why not? Why not? Why not?
And that gets back to, what are the next steps with this document?
Oh, well, what's this?
Artist, you have maple...
Well, whoever, I mean, do people want to be on?
Oh, right. I mean, I, I think that as a commission, if we want to say that our position is, yeah, you should list key businesses that would want to be in there, but then if this is a town-sponsored and paid-for thing, then it needs to...
It depends on who, it depends on what it is.
It's a, it's a map in the open space one.
I see, it's not, it's not recreational.
Right.
Okay, well, there you go.
To that mission is why I think the businesses that have ties to the conservation funds that have been provided, that makes more sense, but from an economic perspective, I completely agree.
But it might be, so it might be, so that might be right in terms of the open space plan, but maybe some committee can expand that concept to make, be more of a recreational map that would take you to...
I mean, Shelburne Farms and the museum are on there.
No, but I mean, if you, you know, it could be another, could serve another purpose. It would be enhanced and serve another purpose.
No, that's Thai Hall, this is Shelburne Bay walking.
There is a map that a person who happens to be on the paths committee has made private project, and he will get copies printed every year or two.
They brought the tie in right here.
He will update it.
And this is the park.
It's more along those lines.
Bay Park.
And this goes across from the accessory.
He's saying that little...
The ADs that had all of these kinds of things.
This is the old Thai Hall.
Support our local businesses or whatever.
Yeah, I continue to struggle with this because it's, it's the open space one.
Well, then, it doesn't, shouldn't have the businesses.
Excavators are 80 years old.
That's how I'm looking at it. There is a map of the town that shows businesses, and I've, I've seen it, I don't know the specific origin, but, right. But, yeah.
But it'd be nice to integrate that map with, ultimately, for, in some other context with this map, so that if you wanted to get on your bike and...
And maybe that's something that we end up in the town plan where we want to feature Shelburne more and really help with...
Well, maybe it's got nothing to do with the planning commission and some other commissions.
True.
Hiking, biking, and walking should just be trails. I don't think any of them, any of them.
Well, the reason we put the two on is because we talk about them extensively in the plan, and I thought maybe it would be good.
Still, this is hiking, biking, and walking.
True.
It's a trail, right, it's a trail map.
What's the problem?
And you're saying that...
I don't think we should be advertising any businesses on this map.
He's saying New Village Farm is more of a destination.
If it's a destination...
Is that what it is?
But it should be, if we want to do an advertisement for something, let's do, let's do it officially on another document.
Was New Village Farm, that doesn't have any conserved land, does it?
New Village Farm was, the town gave $50,000 out of $250,000, they were part of the Conservation Act.
Okay, so it should...
That's already mentioned in the chart where we talk about how much money we spend.
Oh.
Which is good, and that's a good place for it.
That's good.
Yeah, and of course, the Bread and Butter Farm.
So, Bread and Butter and New Village have, have a legitimate reason to be on, but the others don't?
I don't think they should be on this map, but they do have a right to be recognized somewhere else.
All right.
Well...
That's solid feedback.
I think they should decide.
I love that, I didn't realize there were...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that that's necessarily our call, but the comments that we've provided, I think, gives a good idea of where people are coming from.
Okay.
Yeah, this is good, though, I think it'd be a good, good map to have, for sure.
Yeah, like I said, it, it's just very general, it's not a comprehensive map of everything in the town, but it just shows what we do that.
Which is excellent.
So, what do you do now? Go to the slideboard?
We're just about ready, just having a few comments to throw in, give some captions to throw in, and we're done.
Excellent. Well, yeah, thank you for bringing that in and doing this.
All right. Now, one question I had, does anyone know is five where I have that little, I have to fix the color on it.
Dick seems to know.
Five, is that curved trail with the loop on it, is that the Thai Hall trail? Or is that something else?
No, this is the Thai Hall trail.
All right.
This is the trail that goes in by the river.
It's the Nature Conservancy Trail.
And it goes in right along the river, and then, I didn't know it came over to the Thai Hall.
It doesn't.
Oh, it doesn't?
It, it's not supposed to, I mean, people have hacked the trails to connect them, but it's not happy about it.
Okay, so this blue right here is the Thai Hall.
That's the Thai Hall trail.
It's not very well cut.
And then this is the park that, the land that the town was given, I think when this was subdivided by the webs, so this is that park, continuation of that trail.
That's the...
And it comes out here where you can't go anywhere.
Okay, so...
We, we can also, on some of this fine-tuning, we'll, we have one more item and then we can adjourn and...
Sure.
Okay.
Follow-up, yeah, if that works.
Okay, great, I'll hang up.
Sure, thank you. All right, so our, our last agenda item is other business correspondent.
And Jamie has asked me to, to mention a few different things. So, one of them is, and, and some of this actually comes from Joe Colangelo, the town meeting, town manager, rather. May 9th is the date of the select board meeting when they will be getting together and having the annual CDC conversation. If you remember, at the last meeting, Jamie said that he would take a first crack at responding to the survey and that he would take feedback on it, and he committed, he said, to having it ready by, I believe, May 1st or April 30th. So, expect that, that he will be sending it out and looking for comments in the coming days, and that as many commissioners as can attend the select board meeting on May 9th. Given the possibility that at least four of you will be there, it'll be warned as a special meeting, so don't be shocked if you hear or see some reference to a special meeting of the planning commission on May 9th, it's just because if there are four of you at the select board meeting, we are reminded that it has to be warned as a meeting. The other reason why it's possible that May 9th meeting would have a quorum is that the select board agenda for that night has a couple of other topics that they have, the draft agenda that the town manager has put together includes an item called Work Session on Developing a Revised Town Plan. So, evidently, the select board wants to have a conversation with the planning commission about the updating of the town plan, that's about the extent of it. And they also want to have a conversation about economic development. So, May 9th, if you can make the select board meeting, you're...
You shouldn't show up.
That's, that's one of the things, like I said...
Can we get them to put us on early, so we can get through those things?
Uh...
Sit there half the night?
I would, I would say...
Not that we aren't enthralled with other people's meetings.
Yeah, I'll talk to Joe about that. And since, I don't know that you have, I made a copy, this is the CBC form that we're talking about, the select board sends this out, and they ask these questions. These other folks have already received it, but you haven't, so that, those are the questions that you'll have a chance to give input on, to Jamie. Something else that Jamie asked me to share, a woman who lives in Shelburne, whose name escapes me at the moment, has drawn the town manager's attention to something called the Climate Economy Model Communities Program, and the town of Pownell was the first town selected to be in that program. And the program will, quote, "help communities build and implement plans that model state-of-the-art rural development in the age of climate change. The ultimate goal is to create climate-smart communities throughout Vermont and brand them, leveraging rapid change by implementing comprehensive efficiencies, efforts, transportation system improvements, energy generation, entrepreneurship, and business incubation to spur economic progress."